Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. And we hope that everybody had a safe and happy holiday. And we are here today for our regular weekly meeting. And with us, Larry, myself, Larry McDevitt, myself, Mike Steinis, Jack Willie, your county supervisor, Lisa Smith, our county auditor is here, Luann Goke, our executive assistant. I see Teresa KMAQ and Nick Hockenberry on the line. Is there anybody else?
Kelly Gerlock.
Kelly Gerlock. So we should be ready, right?
So we have KMAQ and Teresa.
Yeah. KMAQ and Teresa.
Double our pleasure today.
Welcome, everyone. And first on our agenda today is Elisa Smith, our Jackson County auditor. Good morning.
This morning, a motion is needed to approve the minutes of the June 30th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorize publication in the official newspaper.
So move. Motion to second to approve the minutes of the June 30th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of $212,582.75.
I guess.
Do we need a motion and discussion or do you want to discuss?
So move.
Have a motion to second to approve the claims in the amount of $212,582.75. Any further discussion?
Well, yeah. Wish I had.
I have, I have a few I'll start with if you want to think about it.
So we should just go, shall we?
Because we don't have the list.
Oh, the box.
Yeah, so I think.
Bring the, bring the claims with. So one that was on there, you may have seen it. So it was, Clark had mentioned to us the guardrail on the new Iron Bridge Road. Right after it was done, it was damaged. And I just asked Stacy and Mike about it and it's all taken care of. We got the insurance checked yesterday. So that is a wash. Okay? Thirty eight fifty is a wash. The IIW load rating fees, we were contracted through them till the end of the year. So they would be doing their load rating fees until the end of the year on, on, on.
Calendar year or fiscal year?
I took it as calendar year. And I was, I met with Todd last week with Mike and Stacy and Roger last week for a period and he come up and we talked some things over. And he suggests right now our bridge inspections are on a rotation where they're all need to be completed in a year. Well, he suggested that that's really cumbersome. So you should split it up. What is, what that means is we're going to have to inspect them all again that next year. And then after that, we can do, the year after, it's good for two years. A year after that, we can do half of them. Then do half of them again. Then they'll be on a two-year cycle. We can do half of the inspections in a year. That's what he said. Yes. So we're still under contract with IIW for the load rating. So they'll be doing the load ratings this year.
What was the cost of that?
This, this installment added up to ninety five hundred dollars. I, I think that's his installment. I don't think that's a total.
You know, the shed is complete like this. The Sterling shed is not complete yet.
Is the building complete?
Yeah.
I would say no. I seen the invoice come through for doors and heating this, in this claims period.
I drove by, oh, maybe a couple, two or three weeks ago. I mean, it looks good, but it's still open yet.
Is Mike here?
Mike closing?
Closing, yeah. Hey, you can step in and we can just ask him how it's come along. There was one in there on the, on the woods gearbox. They had to get a new gearbox and phone on the moors. And he said that periodically, yes, and just so we're maintaining them like we should, you know.
Well, in the claims, is that money for the doors and the, and the heating?
Yeah. On the new, on the new shed.
Questions included. So that was the question where we, I asked.
We're not really questioning the claims. I seen the, in the claims, Mike, there was one for doors and heating. So how is the progress coming on the building?
They're hoping to be done tomorrow.
Oh, really?
We won't have the heating hooked up completely. The furnaces are going to be there, but the LP tank is sitting in Preston right now. We're going to have to repaint it and fire it there because it was just all rust.
Same tank.
Go over with a wire brush and do a kind of halfway job where you can add a sandblaster.
Yeah, that's right. Well, with the new building, we should have a good looking LP tank. Is that the same tank that come from the other building?
Yeah.
Okay.
We own our tanks.
Yeah. So that's awesome. That's, that's great news.
It's close to being finished.
Still warm these days to be out there on a tin roof, but you know.
They got that work done. They're finishing up the electrical inside and the plumbing. And the overhead doors, they have to do a little work on it. Furnaces are supposed to be finished.
And if I remember right, our plan for the Sterling building was to keep that for storage. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I guess I question, will that take away from some of the things that are at Janu Jackson? Or will that, all them pieces be still be at Janu Jackson? Okay. Perfect.
If you've got any extra space.
Well, there'll be some space here. There's none around the outside.
There should be one more bill coming in on the shed.
And we look like we're pretty good for the budget wise for that.
Yeah, we're right at budget right now with this one. And there was some extras that did, that not very much. But the well was deeper than what, what we initially bid. So it took a bigger pump and a bigger pressure tank.
Sure.
And then there was some wiring, extra wiring we did.
Well, the well, we certainly can't foresee that, the depth that we need to go. So we need to have a good well. Okay, appreciate it. All other ones, I explained to them that the guard railing was reimbursed to us and, and we're true. I guess the, the question on the contract for IIW, is that calendar year or fiscal year? Calendar. So end of 20, we'll, they'll be done with the load rating part of it. And that was a installment? Is that a quarterly installment or was that a?
They just sent them out. There was a lot Stacy tracks into the contract. So she knows what we're doing. So we don't overpay.
Perfect.
Do you know how deep that well was?
Five hundred and something.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that comes through the claims a while back that it was, it was.
Sixteen thousand. But the reason I ask is that Pappy Farm, that were the conservation just, just getting the well is like, not sure. Just curious how deep that might be. Initially, they were going to go one, one eighty. But we only ended up with like eight gallons or ten gallons a minute. And that's not enough for a pressure washer. And not that we're going to put one in there, but eventually we've got it plumbed. So you could just, you could put a pressure washer down there. So we want deeper right away as long as over there.
Sure.
And that, that was actually cheaper than what the other bid was for that depth. The other contractor that bid the well gave us both depths. This, this was cheaper. So do you have their name? We had Gingrich.
Gingrich, okay.
The one who did this. Otherwise, they're sharper. Well, those are the two that do most of the wells in Mexico. We're just trying to figure out if we've got a well at that property, if it's good or not. There's a pit there, but you don't have to do samples and there's no way to get water out of it now. I'm just curious. It's kind of our next step to open that up. For a horseback right here. They have water there for the horses.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. If you need anything about us, you let us know. My stuff. We're talking about, we have a motion and a second on the claims. Got any further discussion?
Well, we were talking about, what, about the landfill assessment. And now that we don't pay them to do the recycling, is there any reduction in what we paid them?
Probably, but when Luanne was doing claims last, at beginning of last quarter, so April, May, no, March, April. She entered a claim, the claim twice. So we were, so I just put it in for, so I just pulled it, the second one, and said to pay it for next, next fiscal year, not realizing that, remembering that the landfill assessment for the new year would be lowered probably.
I don't think there's any. Is that correct? For imagine, for that portion of the recycling, there won't be any. To sort that.
My question is, is how do we know how much we owe?
Yeah.
Frank.
We shouldn't have gotten the bill from Frank, so.
Well, we need to get a hold of touch space with Frank because he explained that all in the meeting with Dipper that time.
Actually, we've pulled that thirty three thousand dollars out of this, this claim and wait till we get a bill?
We can either pull it and have some other time or later, or I can, we can print it and I can hold it. And then we can reduce the next quarter's payment by the overage that we're paying this time.
Well, it's easier for bookwork. Holding it or not issuing it?
Six, one and a half dozen.
Yeah.
I just don't think we should send the check till we know what we owe.
Yeah.
My plan was to print the check, but hold it until we know, until we get his invoice and then reduce next quarters by the overage. But he does send us a bill. Oh, yeah.
Because, yeah, I don't think we'll get that assessment anymore, the way that was explained to me. So we would have, that's why we thought when we put it in our budget, we put like sixty thousand in, which was about what we were paying with the assessment. And I guess maybe to that, I don't know, to that.
For landfill assessment or recycling?
For recycling, so.
I thought recycling was twenty five thousand, too, that we paid them to pay that. Wasn't that twenty five thousand? That, was it more than that?
I thought it was forty. You have to remember the whole conversation because Gerald got involved that time, too, thought we should keep assessing that. It would make it easier to.
Yeah, and then he wanted to rebate it back.
Yeah, but Frank didn't think that was kosher. We're paying somebody that's not doing anything.
I'm sure I have notes in my budget book.
I guess that would be the question is what did we budget, you know?
For the total land, for the total of the recycle?
We would have made adjustments in what we call now our current budget system. It's after July 1st. We would made those adjustments in this budget. So whatever we put in that line.
We moved it at that time.
I think we did because we knew at that time that that was, was the one that went to do a recycling. They were looking at it. To be the rural recycling that they're doing now. I think we made that adjustment in the current budget.
So I, this is just some of my notes when we were figuring what we thought we'd have to have for pickups with the new recycling contract. But I think at the time, we budgeted like sixty thousand for the whole year for the recycle program. Somewhere in that number. And.
What would be to pay Dipper? What did we budget for the transfer? The transfer station allocation?
I think that was for pickups and to dispose of the material, but our previous.
Because the landfill assessment was like a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars.
I, I just think until we get.
We should probably go ahead with the motion and then after that motion.
We certainly want to wait and have a conversation with Frank and.
Yeah. We need to find out what's what.
So I have a motion and a second to approve and authorize auditor's office to issue warrants in the amount of two hundred and twelve dollars, five hundred and eighty two dollars and seventy five cents as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
I also need a motion is needed to accept, place on file and authorize chair signature on county recorders report a fuse collective for the month of June, 2020. In the amount of sixty four thousand, eight hundred and forty eight dollars and seventy five cents.
Motion to second to approve the county recorders report a fuse collective for the month of June, 2020 of an amount of sixty four thousand, eight hundred and forty eight dollars and eighty five cents. Is that your end statement then? That was just for June? Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
My last item is a motion is needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the July 1st, 2020.
So move.
Second. Motion and second to place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Resolution?
I think you mark will be chosen.
Okay. Okay. So I set my, so Mark, is Mark online? I didn't see him. Hi, Mark. I see you now. You're still.
You can hear me too, probably.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Great.
What do you have for us today, Mark?
What you have apparently in front of you, a resolution along with some forms for our Eastern Iowa Regional Housing Authority for their capital fund program. Every five years, US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, provides the housing authority with capital funds to make improvements or updates to their public housing units. And as such, HUD requires that those, along with any federal source of funds, requires an environmental review to be completed. And because we've got units in four different cities in Jackson County, HUD had recommended that we go to the overarching board, which would be the Board of Supervisors as the local government to sign off on the environmental review. And that same thing was done five years ago and was probably done five years before that. But at this point in time, normally, one would expect these funds to be exempt from an environmental review because what it amounts to has been a combination and they haven't identified all the projects, but their existing homes. They're talking about doing roofing work, some potentially siding work, painting, replacing carpets, replacing windows. And the challenge with the definitions of construction by HUD is that I think it was the window item and is a construction item in their definition, which requires an environmental review to be completed and, and makes it not exempt, even though there is no work that's really changing anything to those houses or outside of those houses in terms of excavating or anything even close. But with that, rather than going to five separate cities, HUD was asking that we go to, as I mentioned, the overarching group, which becomes you guys. And that you would sign off on that and then we actually have to publish the notice in a comment period. And, and then it gets all uploaded to HUD and they have comment periods. The housing authorities got properties in four of our five counties and Dubuque County and, and Clinton County have already signed off. And Delaware County, I believe, is this afternoon will be the same meeting you're having right at this moment. That's it in a nutshell.
Okay, well, yeah, we appreciate that. And as long as we're still in compliance with all their regulations, does anyone like, want me to read this resolution?
I just have one comment. I believe that the numbering of the resolution number is incorrect. I believe that the the housing resolution should be number seven fifty seven because I have another resolution to give that we will be approving.
For signature?
This afternoon here with Ben with number seven fifty six, which is the same number as this. So I believe that your resolution that you're going to be reading should be seven fifty seven. So this is the Stockton Place, seven fifty six. So I think this one should be seven fifty seven. This one, this is, this one I don't think is on the resolution. So if you could change that, bring that up. Thank you.
I would move approval of resolution, resolution number seven five seven dash oh seven dash oh seven dash twenty twenty. Second.
Will that include the next line, possible action for signature also? Or we do that separate?
No.
Do that.
Sorry for the chair design.
All right. So I have a motion and a second to approve resolution seven five seven dash zero seven dash zero seven dash twenty twenty as presented and have the chair sign to certification form. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. And is there anything else you'd like to share with us today, Mark?
Not at this time. I don't have anything. Thank you for taking care of this.
Yeah. If you need anything else, let us know.
Will do. Thanks.
Good week.
You too.
And next on our agenda is Arlene or Ben. Are either one available? Luann, would you be available? Good morning. You have the original.
Not yet.
Yeah.
All right, calendar for the week is where we'll start. Ten thirty this morning, Mike is having meetings with the interim engineer and the engineer staff. At four thirty this afternoon is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Area Executive Board meeting by Zoom for Jack. On Wednesday, July 8th at nine AM, Larry is on KMAQ for Just Talk. And also at nine AM, Jack has a workforce services office hours meeting. Thursday, July 9th at seven AM is a hometown pride meeting by Zoom for Mike. At noon is the manufacturing awareness program, twenty five and twenty five, that listen and learn program. And that's by Zoom and that's for all of you if you want to attend that. At five thirty Thursday evening is Operation New View Finance meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at six thirty is Operation New Views Board by Zoom for Jack and Larry. I think that's a joint meeting with the executive committee as well.
That's a.
The finance committee meeting is at five thirty, the regular meeting is six thirty. The call and information is the same for both meetings. Friday, July 10th at ten AM is the Seventh Judicial Department of Corrections meeting in Davenport for Larry. At noon is a workforce CEO office hours conference call for Jack. At three thirty is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Area CEO meeting by Zoom. And it may be Mississippi Valley Workforce Area Executive meeting at four thirty. We're not entirely sure about that. Both of those would be by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting would be Tuesday, July 14th at nine AM. And at four o'clock that afternoon is the Coca-Cola River Watershed Management Executive Board meeting for Larry. I'm not quite sure how that's going to be done yet, but I'm by Zoom.
Okay. And the corrections one that is down there.
It is, yes. Yeah, in person. All right. First order of business today is accepting the resignations with regret of Bruce Dressler and Steve Paul from the zoning board adjustment. Yeah.
And that was due to the legislation that was imposed that Rural Zoning Adjustment Board live in the rural area of the county.
I would, I would move approval and, and I think they both did a great job. Sorry that they happen to live in the city limits of Nacogdoa, but that's the new law, so we can't have them on there.
And tell them to get out of town, can we?
Anyway.
I would second that. That's too bad that little situation.
So I have a motion and a second to accept the resignations with regret of Bruce Dressler and Steve Paul. We'd like to thank them for their years of service. Bruce had twelve years and Steve had five years and they both did a tremendous job for us. And the pay was excellent, but you know, we appreciate, we appreciate all their service they did and everything during that time period. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
I also have two applications to replace them on the zoning board of adjustment. The first one is David B. Kendall, who's term expires May 6th of 2025. And the second is Mike Nicholson, whose term expires on May 6th of 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept David Kendall, B. Kendall and Mike Nicholson as zoning board of adjustment replacements. And they both have extensive years of service and knowledge. So all those in favor? Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
And we still need a woman for the Jackson County zoning.
Okay, ladies, let's step up to the plate.
Have to live in the rural area.
Yes, that one too. Thank you.
Thanks, Luann.
Aye.
And I see we are joined by Ben Coburn, our Jackson County zoning administrator. Morning, Ben.
Good morning. So I believe I had introduced this before the pandemic had started. To be the final plat of Stockton Place. So for your review, I think that this is over on 233rd Avenue, so just kind of southeast of town, out by, by your place, actually, Larry. So I had introduced this back in early March. I think that one of the last meetings before we had to go to some of this stuff. So, um, you know, as far as any kind of issues, I don't see any with, as far as zoning goes, it meets the minimum requirements. Purpose is to split off the home from the rest of the land and either sell the home and acreage off or, you know, sell the remaining, I think there's some timber and open space there for. With the rolling acre subdivision to the north, we did have some lots already subdivided in that, in that quarter, quarter area. So that's what figured the need for a minor subdivision instead of just doing this with the regular plat of service. So, um, you know, with, I guess, zoning department having no concerns, you know, we're not looking at any potential development as of right now. And as far as a, you know, future developments occurring on the remaining acreage there, you know, that's something we can, I guess, deal with in a planning and zoning commission. Whatnot, but as far as I can tell, it is one thing to, to do that. So, um, you know, unless any, anyone else on board has any kind of, of concerns, I'd like to hopefully get this recorded if it's been possible.
I'm sure they want it too. So I would move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution on the final plat for Stockton Place. Resolution number? Seven five six. Seven five six. Seven, seven, twenty twenty. As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Great. Oh, let's see. What else? I spoke with the property owners, people in charge of the Property Owners Association at a weekly play. I think it was Regina Horizon, I think it's her name, I forgot her, and then her husband as well within the past week or two about doing some site visits out there. So I went out there. Within the past week or two about doing some site visits out there, so I went out there, took a look at some of the things, you know, going on. You know, we've got some folks accumulating some vehicles, they think they're, you know, in a. In a part of the lake that isn't as well traveled, I guess, you know, some of the dead end. Drive or courts, you know, going out there, so kind of looking at things. We've got one, what's definitely is a junkyard, you know, at least it doesn't part maybe more. That's another one. I believe that one's on Pine Street. Those would be kind of on the west part of the lake suburb, so that's a little of those as well. I, I will be on vacation next week, so, you know, we'll get all these notices out and hopefully. We'll have a bunch of voicemails to respond to, because I'm both wanting what they're going to have to do, but.
You said now, I mean, your letter would give an outline of what needs to be done.
Exactly, some, I don't, you know, my notice always says you must make a request in writing. Within the timeframe, you know, type of abatement. And, you know, I don't know perfectly clear that this needs to be processed. If they miss that deadline, you know, they don't get that additional.
So originally, how much time do they have?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
It would be the, the minimum, so, yeah. You know, along with all my other ones, we should have, I think, nine, maybe ten nuisances all going, nuisance enforcement all going at once. Have all these.
That would be great.
Um, other than that, I see on the agenda, we probably got two possible appointments.
We may, just made them.
Okay, great, so I'm happy to hear that, we are, now that we're at five now. We weren't able to get one scheduled, so hopefully we can get one going and get some of these application calls. I think we still have one vacancy on the zoning commission.
Yeah.
Where we're at with that, but.
I haven't found a rural woman yet.
I think, you know, we're at six and seven there, so I hate to say one, one board's need is greater, not as great, but for just.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben. And is Arlene waiting, is that the? Situation is, I see Todd's on here.
Let me see what color.
Well, we can talk to Todd a little bit here, if that's okay. Todd, are you online or?
Yes, I am. I'm listening into. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Todd, good morning.
Morning.
I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Disappeared.
So, uh, do we need to take action on the interim engineer position, is that correct or? That's what I thought, action on here. We did that already. So I guess our position is we'd just like to welcome the board and get together and have a little conversation here and see where we might go. And if we'd like, sure like your input and suggestions going forward. And whatever your information or input that you can provide for us, yeah. Suggestions maybe?
Okay. Well, I thought we had a pretty good discussion last week, so I, we got a lot of things covered and they kind of had a communication with Alex later on about bridge inspection and that kind of thing. Got another issue, I guess, resolved or taken care of through the D O T, so. Yeah, I guess I'd, I'd be open to, you know, whatever you, the board, you know, would want me to do as far as the scope of, you know, what I, what I can provide for Jackson County, so.
Yeah, I, I know last week when we were, when we, I met with you and Roger and Stacy. And, and update these guys a little bit here, we talked about, I mean, you mentioned a road safety plan. You know, that was kind of interesting to me, I didn't want to get into it, but maybe we can discuss that sometime when you have some time and what that all entails. Basically, is that something that comes from the state?
Yeah, so a few years ago, they started doing, they're called local road safety plans. And it was, it was being funded out of the H CIP and the T S F money. But I, I'd have to check with the D O T, the idea was to get every county that wanted one, get them a plan. So I'd have to see, check with the D O T if that, that funding is still available, but it was a hundred percent funded, so I'll, I'll have to, I can check, that should be easy enough to do, so.
That'd be great. I mean, if that's something, and they come and basically look at your road situation and devise a plan for you basically going forward?
Yeah, though, it's a pretty extensive plan and then what it does is the recommendations, they're just, it's like a single sheet. And they'll, they'll like, they'll prioritize your top ten, say, curve locations that are at highest risk. And then there'll, there's a little, a sheet that you use, so when I, when you submit for H CIP secondary money, you just, you, this form goes in along with it. They've actually made it very systematic and a pretty black and white process to go and submit these projects for funding, so.
Be nice.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I had a question, one time, Todd, we looked at a base one project and I don't know, we have, we had thoughts about it, how's your base one projects working out?
I mean, so we did one right before we had a really bad winter in spring. And it was in excellent shape after the spring. And I know, I'm sure you guys have experienced some pretty. Severe soft road, you know, issues after that bad winter. Well, the road we just did hailed it great, I mean, it was one of the best roads in the county, so. I, I guess to answer the question, I would say. If you pick the right road and do the right prep work. It's, it is definitely a higher level service gravel road than a regular gravel road. There's no, it hangs down a better road to drive on, but you got to pick the right candidate.
Yeah, that, that comes with experience and, and.
And traffic count would be an important part of that too, wouldn't it?
Yes, definitely, it, it, not just the, the count of traffic, but the type of traffic. So if it's going to get a lot of heavy truck traffic in the spring when the subgrade is, is wet and, and weak, you know, it, it's still, it's. You're going to have issues with failures. You know, if it's just mostly residential traffic, traffic with just a few trucks, you know, it, it, it provides a very good driving.
Is it cost effective then, or compared to like blacktop or? Blacktop, you still need your.
Yeah, so the reason we Clinton County kind of took, got into this is because it was, we were getting requests for, you know, to pave the gravel road. Well, you know, you got a hundred, hundred and fifty vehicles a day, it's just, it's just not feasible to pave a road with that kind of traffic on it. But, you know, gravel roads with that much traffic become more of a issue to maintain and the dust becomes an issue and there's some safety concerns. So we looked at doing gravel road stabilization with chemical treatment, whether it be calcium chloride, base one, there's a lot of different. You know, chemicals out there you can use. We looked at doing several stabilization kind of as an intermediate step between just a typically, a typical maintained road and a paved road. Kind of a, the next step up, but not the full step to paving, because you, we really couldn't afford to be paving additional miles.
That's for sure. Well, I really appreciate it, I know you had mentioned, one other thing I made a note of when we were talking to Roger, or to Roger and Mike was. That, that there was something about some safety, maybe there's some safety money available, like for rumble strips, maybe like even on. Iron Bridge. Road that was just.
Yeah, so that's the, I think I mentioned it before, it's called Highway Safety Improvement Program Secondary, H CIP secondary money. And it's money that you apply for, and those are systemic type improvements, like you just mentioned, like, like things you would do along the entire road, like rumble strips. Centerline rumbles, edge line rumbles, paving four foot shoulders that curve, or painting two foot shoulders to the entire roadway. Painting wider lines, you know, wider paint lines, that kind of thing, so they're meant to, I guess they call it the low hanging fruit kind of stuff. The, the things that have a, a pretty good impact for the low cost, so they're low cost, high value kind of impacts.
Okay, well, I, I guess, you know, we'd really, we really respect your input and your, and, and again, your communication with Alex, you know, communicating him as far as where. You'd like to see him or what he's capable of at, at this point too, so. Kind of running down a new path here and seeing where we might head, so appreciate your input and, and. Continue to work with you.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, Todd, have a good day.
Yep, you too.
Yep. Arlene just ducked in and ducked out? I guess I didn't ask you guys if you had any other questions for Todd, I had a couple, three pages of notes here.
Diagnose recycling, we need budget sixty-five thousand for recycling. We budget a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars for the landfill. You need to find that by four. The assessment then would be twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents.
You talking just about the landfill now, or you talking about?
It's just a hundred and seven thousand.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with the recycle program.
The recycling program, we budgeted sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, so like I said, you know, he brought them down last Tuesday, was the first day, of course, it was a busy, busy weekend. And I, the, the container close to me, I checked basically daily, I went by daily, it was kind of interesting to see. So first of all, you know, if they, they quit taking cans and bottles and all, somebody could make a fortune if they want to get the cans and bottles out of these things, but no, it filled up pretty fast and it was a busy weekend. I mean, there was a lot of firework, cardboard and stuff like that, but. We had called him, I actually had mentioned something to him during the weekend and he was down, I told the guys at the shop, he, he'd be down, as he said, he's already here and gone. So that was at seven thirty, so. And he was going to exchange out of Crick's the next day, which was about seventy-five percent full, so. We're just kind of, at this time, we're still in experiment stage to say how many pickups we're going to need, but. I've got it calculated that we, when we calculated to begin with, we pick in Bellevue once, once a week, so, so far that's working out, so we hope that.
And also, as Frank said, with everybody being home, they're doing a lot more cleaning, and again, they've had the highest numbers out there for jobs ever.
So we'll keep, we'll keep you posted about that, how that's working, I hope that works out for us. And the city starts theirs in August, is that correct? And I'm not sure about Preston, when they start. I think, yeah, and Bellevue also is, is doing the curbside, so, you know, that, I, I think we'd get some extra from Bellevue too, from city residents, but that's, that's normal, so. Okay, well, that's just my little port report there, sorry, Arlene, to take up your valuable time, but. Arlene Sharp, our Jackson County Recorder is here with us today. Morning.
Good morning, and it's Shaw.
Shaw.
Yes.
Do I do that every time? Next time. Luanne? You put that big bow and put a little ex- frontises behind it, no R.
So I'm here to present my fiscal year end report, which you guys should have copies of. So the three page report, you want to look at that first, on the bottom of the first page. What I usually do is just put the county total, which is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seventy dollars and thirty-six cents. Which is an increase over last year of twenty-six thousand plus. And that's mostly from reporting of mortgages, leases and signups, okay? The D N R and the vital totals are about the same.
I, I should say that's awesome, but it just puts a little more work for you guys, but yeah, that's.
It's fine, that's what it's all about.
Is, and the, 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 the thing I look at, when I look at that year end report, what really gets me every time is Arlene, is the portion that we get to keep. And the rest of it goes to the state, that's what really digs a thorn in my side, like.
I feel it too.
A T V writing fees, where does it all go?
So anyway, those are the county totals. And then the state total, what goes to the state is three hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-four cents, which will make you happy, is actually fifty-two hundred less than last year, so. So the total fees for the year is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy cents. Other than that, you know, it's, it's, it's not a boat renewal year, so of course, you're seeing a lot less that goes to the state there, but all in all, it was a good year. And with the last four months with COVID, you know, our office doesn't stop anything, because we can still take recordings through the mail, through submission. Same way with vital record requests and D N R, most no A T V stuff, that can all be done through the mail, so. We don't see a loss there at all, because we kept doing things for people, just through the mail and stuff, so. And then you also, I also gave you this sheet, which I think is interesting, and all I did was add last year's to the bottom rather than. Since I've been in office, I just think it's amazing to see. The total per fiscal year, what county gets, what state gets every year, just, just for your.
Appreciate that. No, I guess we just want to extend our appreciation for you and you and your staff are doing and your, good job you're doing. And if you were around after a meeting, we stopped down and looked at the. Counter again a little bit, I think there were some questions, somebody mentioned yesterday, there might be some questions that we can discuss.
Yeah, Marty's been in a few times, I think there's just a couple.
Well, we need to keep moving on it, that's for sure.
And he goes on vacation.
Yeah, I heard.
Yeah, we do want to get the waste supplies ordered this week, so hopefully.
I believe we can stop down and do that.
All right, appreciate it.
Or do we need to do that during the meeting? Is there action on the year end? Where did I do my? On the, the year end statement. I have a motion and a second to, for action on the recorder's fiscal year end report as presented. To approve the fiscal year end report as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried, thank you, Arlene.
I know, it's authorized you to sign it too.
And authorize you sign. So is there any other boards or commissions before us today that we need to discuss?
No, but I was, I was, I. Over the weekend, Marilyn and I drove up to Manchester and we went out to see their new jail. And.
I heard you wanted to move it.
I, I said, I wish we had a big truck, we could just move it now and here. And I was talking to her last night, it's, it looks, I think it looks quite a bit like what ours is going to look like. And Marilyn says, looks really nice. She, she, her big instrument, her dad used to do a lot of instruction and stuff. She said, all those different squares, they add up, how come you're not just making nice as well? We talked about that too.
You mean the offsets in there now?
She says, Dan always says that adds a lot of cost to your building. I says, well, we discussed that with John too, this is, this is the plan that we talked about, but I was really impressed, it looked really nice. I says, well, we discussed that with John too, but this is, this is the plan that we talked about, but I was really impressed, it looked really nice and I do wish we could have just moved it down here, but.
Could have brought a couple of bricks with you.
With that being said, discussing the jail, have we made any decisions that we're going to like September, March, we should get that out there and be done with it. I, I still had another conversation since our last meeting.
I had a lady come up and ask when, when's the new jail coming? So I guess it's both ways, I don't.
Yep, so I mean, we just need to make a decision, I honestly feel that we need to market this thing as hard as we can and to get everything, the pamphlet and everything put together, and just think what are you doing tomorrow?
I just don't think we can do it in September.
I'd like to, I really would like to too, Larry, I really would. We just all get on the same page here and move forward. I know it's disappointing. It is to me too, I mean, we need it, there's no doubt about it.
And I'm worried that mailing it all out, because people are home, maybe they will sit down and read it, which they haven't done before, but I don't know, how do you, how do you figure that one out?
Hopefully we can keep Delbert happy for another six months and move forward here. Any other boards or unfinished business that you'd like to?
Well, we did have our meeting with HACAP last night, the twenty eight partners. When we approved the memorandum of understanding for the merger of Operation New View and HACAP, which is supposed to take effect October first. We talked about the extension of lease from September to October first, but apparently you signed that, right? A couple of weeks ago? Okay, so. Do we have it?
That was the question yesterday afternoon, that was approved on June twenty third.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if they got officially signed, it was approved, we just didn't sign it.
Luann, we signed that, didn't we? We, I'm sure we did.
Yes. Which, which document?
It was the extended lease from.
I can't, nobody has assigned copy. So anyway, that's why I said, we just need to get that done. We just.
To extend it from.
September thirty. And we just need to get that so we can get it sent to New View so that Laura, the chairman can sign that.
And we'll, we'll sign that after today.
Okay.
He's on.
It sounds, I mean.
We're still working. As of July first, Title One youth, we didn't have a, a spot, somebody providing those services. And so we're still working with Southeast Community College, we have. They've sent us changes that they would like to see in the contract, we have responded. We gave them specific deadlines when they had to respond back this afternoon, I should find out whether they in fact are going to sign the contract or their letter of intent, which they have done either. And so if they don't, then we have got to negotiate with someone else to provide those services and then resubmit requests for proposals this fall, because whoever takes it over July first, it's just from July first to December thirty first. And then the new, so. It's really been frustrating.
I seen that they rejected or were awarded the contract and then they backed out and then they said they were gonna.
Well, they kept saying they needed more time, they need more time, we had liked to give them more time, but we didn't have more time. So, and they questioned who did the scoring and our attorney says everything was done exactly according to the rules and they're not sure why Southeast Community College is raising this fuss. But mainly because they didn't get the adult and the dislocated workers contract after forty years, it was awarded to someone else. But they still would have had three quarters of a million dollars to provide services to youth. I don't know.
You didn't want to go there.
Hopefully we'll find out this afternoon. But it's, it's been a, been a frustrating process for everybody. Making your state and national federal government.
They always help us out. Any further discussion on any other unfinished business?
I don't have any.
I'd just like to say that everybody, keep in mind, the pandemic is not over. So we had a rise a little bit in few spots and again, stay responsible for your health and safety and for others, for others also health and safety, so. With that. I have nothing further.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.